We are going to call the meeting to order. Everybody's here and we have Ashley offsite attending remotely.
Remotely, yep.
Okay, do we have any additions to the agenda?
None.
No additions to the agenda? Everybody has an agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I approve the agenda.
A motion by Rick, second by Jacob. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Carrie.
How do we do with Ashley remote? Does she need a roll call?
Oh, we have to roll call. You're right. So let's go through the roll call. We're gonna have to go.
Ashley?
Do we really know?
Yeah, we're gonna have to.
Yeah, we should.
No, I'm serious because it's a core one without me anyway, but I mean, I, but okay.
Thank you.
Jacob?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Okay, so then, nobody here for public comment? That's been a while. Bobby can be a little bit further. We have the consent agenda with three sets of minutes that everybody had to look at. Cheryl, can you inform us a little on the bills and things?
Yes, I did get to go through the bill bills. That was pretty much normal business. I noticed we have some, some more new hotspots to help with remote learning. Those came in. Other than that, it was, oh, and some more equipment. Tables and bandsaw for the, you know.
New project.
The new, new project, yep. So, other than that, pretty much normal business.
Okay, personal items.
The only other thing that I would just add on the bills, and I had mentioned this in previous months, but just a reminder, those expenditures are slightly higher right now. Some of those coronavirus relief funds are being expended, and so when you start looking at the total bottom line of a monthly expenditure, you'll see it is up from what maybe past Novembers have looked. That's really what's going on. It is that, that relief money that we are expending right now. There are deadlines. There were some at the end of October. There are some again here in December. And so we're in the process of making sure that we meet those deadlines and can get those reimbursements and stuff.
With absolutely nothing we can do about it except get it done.
Right, yeah. And I mean, the board has approved all of those, that plan. And so it's now, it's just a matter of being able to actually get the money expended. So if we have to have it expended before we can get reimbursed, we have it, and then we can get reimbursed for it. So, but that means the monthly bills are slightly upward compared to maybe what they would be if you look back December or November of last year, I guess is what I'm saying.
Yep. Personal items, anything? Matt, everybody got the stuff to read on?
Yep, so Ms. Andres, Mr. Orline needs an overload for her. Be my recommendation to approve that. We have Katie's resignation, and then we also have Mr. Knutzberg, who is going to be coaching junior high basketball this winter. Fingers crossed that we're going to continue to have a winter.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
We go.
I have a motion from Thomas. I'll be a second. From Bruce. Any further discussion?
Um, the community ed wage scale, has that changed?
So we did make some adjustments to the community ed wage scale. The reason that those adjustments are coming through now is because we did approve a new substitute wage scale. And so it's just making sure that those employees that are on our payroll and part of permanent employment are at least in the same boat as, as our substitute employees. That's the, the impact of that community ed wage scale.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Whoop. We have a roll call. Nicky, you just keep looking at me.
I know, I was just like, we have to come with Ashley.
So let's do the roll call again.
Ashley?
Ashley?
Did we lose her?
I can see her, I can't hear her.
Aye.
There we go, we got it.
There we go.
Yep, we got you now.
Jacob?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
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 Maggie?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Carrie. Okay, then we'll go to communication items. Right back.
So just a couple of things for the board. The MSBA conference, I'm sure most of you have received the emails, but that conference is going to be a virtual conference. Right now, there is no registration fee. There never has been a registration fee for the MSBA Leadership Conference. So my intent was going to just have all board members registered for that conference. I'm assuming, once the schedule comes out and presenters and stuff, it'll be one of those things that you can partake in any of those, if you have time. It's not like you have to have dedicated time each day. So the plan right now is we'll register all board members for the Leadership Conference in January. And if for some reason you know that we don't need to register, you just let us know. Otherwise, there really is no harm in, in doing that. Started second quarter and, well, at the beginning of November, so we're just getting going in, in second quarter. Things continued to, to move. It's very fluid. November 30th, we'll be changing our hybrid learning model at the elementary school. They will be moving to an A-Day, B-Day, very similar to what the secondary school is, is on now. We'll see. The, the goal right now and the hope is to have us be able to get to the end of calendar year 2020 with that model. I don't know. It's, nobody has a crystal ball when it comes to it. But I think at this point, the real question is, we need to be able to figure out how we can right-size the number of students that we can have in the building in order to provide coverage and supervision. And clearly, these last two to two and a half weeks have been very stressful on the elementary school, and having everybody in four days a week has been, it's been tough with the number of adults that we have, have had that have been out for a variety of reasons. So hopefully, starting on the 30th, we will be able to get some stability to that and, and have that work. If you follow the news, or you know, if you're watching other school districts, a lot of them are moving. I don't know that there will be anyone in our area anymore that has in-person instruction. I think those are all, those models are all going by the wayside. There will be a variety of schools that will be in a similar hybrid model to ours as of November 30th. And then there will be another contingent of schools that have moved to distance learning. I think right now, it really looks like the trend is that schools are taking pre-K, K1 and 2, and continuing to bring them in in some form of a hybrid. And then grades 3 through 12 are in full distance learning. I, I struggle with that. I, it's, I don't think it's ideal. I don't think really any of this is ideal though either. So just know that that's kind of where the, the trend is moving. But we are committed to try and keep kids in the building as long as we can. And right now, it's trying to get that right number of students that we can have in the building and still be able to staff it, and still be able to have subs, and still be able to have adults that can provide the supervision that's needed. So it's an ongoing process. COVID-19 team continues to meet weekly, and we will continue to do that. So I'm sending each of those, those meeting notes to everybody every week. Please keep up with them. But that's kind of where things are at with that. Questions at all for me?
I just have to take my hat off to you, the administrators, all of the staff, for doing whatever you can to get through this thing. It is a moving target, enough so that personally, I can't even keep up with it anymore. Every week, it changes. So you read through all the stuff, and it's like, oh my goodness, what, what are you supposed to do here? But I want to take my hat off to everybody. Everybody's doing their best to struggle through this thing. And like you said, it may not be ideal, but I think everybody's doing a fantastic job.
Yeah, and so the commitment has stayed the same. The message from the get-go to this is that Pinesville Area Schools has prioritized having kids in school. And we are going to hold on to that as long as, as we absolutely can. And I'm hopeful that by, by moving to this A-Day, B-Day at the elementary school, it will right-size the number of kids in the building, that we will be able to have that be a consistent model. But again, I don't have a crystal ball. Nobody does. It's really, you know, time is going to tell, and what happens with cases countywide, statewide, regionally, all that's going to drive whether we have healthy adults, employees, to be able to continue to operate school buildings.
Okay, then we move to committee reports, organizational reports. Not sure what's out there or anything. Okay?
I don't know. Cheryl, Ed?
Yeah, I don't know that there really is anything as far as committee or organizational reports.
Okay, and student representative, any thoughts?
There hasn't been a ton of stuff going on, but I know volleyball just finished up and football, because it was shut down.
Okay.
Okay, I was like, how are you doing? Like, how are, like, kind of like from just a student perspective?
Um, it's like been, as a student perspective, I'm, I'm doing fine. I'm living life, I guess. I don't know, I don't like being out on Mondays because I feel like I'm just completely familiar with the kids from the class, but it is what it is. So, I mean, I'm working on scholarships and stuff, so trying to do stuff while I'm at home.
Yeah, but the kids are being pretty resilient.
Yeah, yeah. So, I don't know, I haven't heard a ton of, I think kids are liking it just because, I mean, they're not liking it, but they are. They're adjusting, so.
I just questioned. About sports now, that's out, but does that include all extracurriculars, or are we still allowed to do other extracurriculars? Like speech?
Well, so all state high school leagues are, activities are on pause. So state, speech is certainly a state.
Did that come from the governor, or did that come from the state high school league?
Um, I believe that.
The governor. Did you say all extracurriculars?
Yeah.
All youth activities.
All youth activities.
Yeah, and I think the state high school league has interpreted the governor's executive order to include all of their activities, regardless if it's a fine arts activity or, or athletic activity. There is some question about things like FFA and, and some of that. And we're still trying to kind of sort through what those, those mean as far as if they fall outside of the Minnesota State High School League and how that pertains. I, realistically, I think the intent was the four-week pause was a comprehensive four-week pause is, is I believe what the intent was.
I know additions for one act have started, but they're doing like virtually, like some of those are smaller, it's like doing.
Yeah, so they did additions virtually, and they're probably thinking they'll do their competition virtually as well.
Well, I know my granddaughter's in dance at Buffalo, and they're doing it virtually. So they're still doing dance, but they're doing it virtually.
Yep, and so the other thing that's with the state high school league pause, you can still have that virtual contact with students and, and stuff, but there just can't be anything in person. Doesn't matter if it's a practice or a competition.
Or large group activity.
And for FFA, I'm an active too, and I know like a lot of our competitions, they have all scheduled like through March online, virtually. But like if, if end up something does happen, they will like consider that as a practice and then open it back up to do region stuff. But yeah, all competitions right now are pretty much online. So at least they have to do something. So.
Well, good. Then we'll move on. Old business, new business. We have the 20, would be the 1920 audit report. And we have a representative from the accounting company. Schletterwetter and Company. Is that pronounced right?
Right.
Welcome, Ryan.
Thank you. Ryan Schmidt, I'm a senior manager with Schletterwetter. And we've sent you the full audit reports from FY20, but we're going to go through the PowerPoint presentation that kind of summarizes the high-level results and includes some graphics and some extra information. So just hitting the high points. So if we turn into the first page or the first slide, first off, just real high level, you know, what is an audit? What do we do during an audit? What is the process? Basically, it consists of us typically coming in and obtaining your financial records and, and your financial information from throughout the year. Of course, we had to do it all virtually this year, so it was a little interesting navigating that, but it worked out. And we perform a number of procedures over this data, such as inquiries with management and staff. You know, various analytics where we develop expectations on what we expect. Your revenues or expenses for the year to be, compare that to actual results. And then lots and lots in detail testing, things like sampling procedures, confirming information with the county, the state, et cetera. Based on the results of all these procedures, we then express an opinion on whether or not we feel your financial statements are accurate. And the opinion we've given you this year is what's called an unmodified opinion. So in other words, it's a clean opinion, and it's the best opinion you can achieve. Moving on to the next page. So that's kind of the overall high-level result, you know, in a nutshell. Now, the next page here, we talk about the other, you know, kind of how did the audit go? So we got that clean opinion, but also the audit really went quite smoothly, especially considering that we were doing it virtually. Everything had to be sent electronically, and it was, it was an added element of complication, but things still went pretty smooth. The, the staff and the team did a great job, you know, connecting and getting us what we needed. Nothing unusual noted as far as strange accounting transactions, or accounting policies, or anything that concerned us there. The one thing we do want to point out is that there is a new accounting standard this year that went into effect. That's GASB 84. And the impact of that is that student activities, the finances, you know, those dollars used to be held separately outside of the school. So if you were to look in financial statements from prior years, there's a schedule in the back that talks about student activities and shows all of that separate. Under this new accounting standard, they're now considered to be part of the general fund. They're part of the district now. So even though they're still being tracked separately, they're held, all that financial activity falls within the general fund. You'll see the impact of that in a further slide here. And the last item down here, there are a few estimates in the financial statements that we consider to be significant. The first two are the results of actuarial studies that met pension liability and that met OPEB liability. And because there's so many actuarial inputs and estimates, can really fluctuate from year to year. And then that final one there is the balances that, the, the funding that's due from the Minnesota Department of Education at the end of the year. It's based on estimates as well, and that can always be a bit of a moving target, especially with things like special lab funding if we move into the next year. All right. During the audit, we also have to look at not only the numbers, but the processes, the procedures you have in place behind those numbers. And as a result, we have some internal control-related items here that we always have to communicate to you. So the first one here relates to audit adjustments. And basically, what this is saying is that during the audit, you know, let's say we come across a number that needs to be adjusted. So we're looking at how much is due from the state based on current criteria, current reports that are available. Well, if that number doesn't match what's in your system, well, in order to get you that clean opinion, we help with some of those adjustments to help get you to where you need to be. And that's all that that is saying, is that we've assisted with some year-end adjustments. Pretty common. Next one here is extremely common. This is a lack of segregation of duties. Every district we work with has this finding in their financials. It's basically just saying that because you only have so many staff that are involved with the financial reporting process, there's certain people who have a little bit more access to the entire accounting system than what's considered ideal. So it's just something to be aware of. There's people that have this access, and there needs to be oversight over these people. And finally, we have one here related to financial statement preparation. This is just because a third party, ourselves, were preparing the financials on your behalf. And whenever somebody outside of the district is preparing your financials, there's supposedly a heightened risk that a disclosure or something like that could be missed. All right. Can't lick my fingers. Pages I stick together. All right, next page, Minnesota legal compliance. So as, as part of the audit, the state also has us look at your compliance with various Minnesota statutes. So they've got all these checklists, one for each of the areas listed up on the screen. And we look at, you know, how did you go about contracting and soliciting bids? Where are you keeping your funds as far as investments and banks and things like that? Any transactions where there's a conflict of interest, so on and so forth. And based on our review this year, we didn't find any instances of non-compliance, so that's good news. Okay, before we get into the numbers here, I always first like to take a look at what's happening with your enrollment. So from here on out, we've pretty much got trend analysis graphs for the rest of the slides here. And this is looking at 2016 through 2020. Your enrollment broken out by pre-K through six compared to seven through 12 for 2016 to 2020. And the change that you see here from 2019 to 2020 is an increase of about 18 students. And the reason that's significant is because, as you're well aware, this funding is the prime, or this, this student count is the primary driver for your funding. So you ended the year with 950 students, which is an increase of 18 from last year. And if you flip to the next page, and you look at that blue bar from 2019 to 2020, you'll see it kind of reflects that increase in your enrollment. So there's a direct correlation there between the funding that you get and how many students you have. So this next slide here, this is looking at the general fund, 2016 through 2020. And then on the far right-hand side, we've got the 2020 budget as well. Just a real big picture look. You have your revenues in the blue, expenditures in the red, then that green fund balance, you can see that's been a, a growth trend over the past five years there. Big picture compared to budget, revenues came in at about 11, 11.5 million dollars, which is about $118,000 less than what was budgeted. Expenditures came in at about 11.1 million, which is actually under budget by about 291,000. So you ended the year with an increase in your general fund balance of about $444,000, compared to a budgeted increase of 271. Next couple pages here, just break that out into a little bit greater detail. Not, not going to spend a whole lot of time on these, just figured I'd include them in case you wanted to see the detail here. Revenues, I mean, you were really close on budget with your revenues in all categories. Biggest difference is under that other local and county revenues. And that's actually, the difference you see there is actually related mostly to student activities. And now that that's included in your general fund, that's an area where revenues, the money coming in was less than anticipated, possibly COVID-related and due to things kind of, you know, winding down. Next page, we have expenditures, same sort of graph, just breaking out the detail of the expenditures on that prior page. Once again, everything really close to budget across the board. The biggest difference is here, regular instruction, which really not much of a difference in the scope of 5.2 million dollars in expenses that fall into this category. That came in under budget about 135,000, and instructional support services is probably the biggest difference on here. That came in under budget by about 163,000. Mostly due to, you know, deep, less salaries, supplies, kind of across the board in those categories. All right, so we've looked at the detail of your revenues, your expenses. Now, this is looking at that fund balance at the end of the year. And here we have it broken out into different classifications. So these are, you know, under the, under the way that MBE tracks your classic, your fund balance classifications and has you break out, you know, what your fund balance is set aside for, what it's restricted for, et cetera. So that's what we have here. We have non-spendable in the blue. That's things like inventory and prepaid and things that aren't in a spendable form. The red is the restricted portion of your fund balance at the end of the year. And the green is the assigned portion, so it's not restricted by an external party. It's something that you've decided to set aside for some sort of future purchase or expense. And then unassigned is the purple, and that is the fund balance that's just available for your day-to-day expenses, whatever you need it for. So you can see overall increase in fund balance. We had an increase in that restricted category. That's mostly due to student activities being wrapped into the general fund. And that's how they're tracked separately. They have a separate fund balance classification. They're considered to be restricted. You have more money that's been set aside for various future purchases and expenses in that assigned category. And then your unassigned fund balance, as a result of those changes, actually decreased a little bit from last year. It's down about $145,000 from FY19. So looking at the next page, this is a commonly referred to ratio of those unassigned expenditures as a percentage of your annual budget. Do you want to flip onto the next page here? Thank you. I can see the reflection. I can keep track. So anyway, this is looking at your unassigned fund balance at the end of the year as a percentage of your annual budget. So with that decrease in the unassigned portion, and with growth in your expenses, this ratio actually did drop off a little bit from FY19 to FY20. So you currently have a policy in place to have a target of at least 8% of your annual budget. And I know that this is something that you guys are looking into and wondering if maybe you should be increasing it or modifying it at all. I did look into, well, I looked, I looked for guidance from the state, from MBE, from the Office of the State Auditor. And, you know, they, they won't put a solid number out there. They, they put numbers out there for cities and for other organizations, but what they say for schools is basically, it's very dependent upon the financial circumstances and your situation. And I think part of the reason for that is, you know, charter schools, we work with them a lot, and they're a lot more financially volatile. And they tend to have a goal that's more around the 20 or 25% mark. Well, their funding stream isn't as consistent as yours. You know, I, what we often see for districts is probably more in the 10 to 15% range. And, you know, it's, it's hard to give a real solid recommendation, but I, I do think 8% is probably a little bit on the low end of what I see with most of the other districts we work with. So if, if you were to modify it, I certainly wouldn't decrease it. I'd consider maybe somewhere in that 10 to 15% range. But it's really a judgment call and, and, you know, something you have to look into the future and, and see, you know, how conservative do you want to be? What kind of cushion do you want to have based on when your funding comes in and how consistent you think that stream is? So.
Over the years, we always felt that that was kind of low. And we just get, we struggled with it.
Yeah.
Because a long time ago, when, unfortunately, a number of years ago, when they got on the board, we were struggling. We were.
Yep.
We were dropping below that number some, and we were in, in a whole different world. And then we have a lot of things that have changed as far as trying to get a grip on it. With Matt here and Bob Hewitt before him. And it would seem to me, we should be getting into the numbers where that should be. We always felt, and I don't know, Cheryl, you were in on it, Rick, you were in on some of that budgeting issue. But I just always felt we were way too low. But if we went with a, a 12 or a 13 or something like that, we would be in the ballpark of where we really should be at, instead of below where we should be in our estimation.
That's how I feel.
Okay.
That would be, that would be my recommendation.
Because 8% right now puts us at how many months I'm operating?
It's about, you know, just shy of one.
Right.
Yeah, it seems a little. Especially, you know, we, this past year, we kind of learned how volatile the world we live in. So, you know, if you have the ability to increase that policy and actually be in line with it, which apparently you do, it would probably be a good, a good move, in my opinion.
Well, that was kind of scary. There were times where the state would just hold funding back.
Yeah.
Well, honestly, what do you do? All the expenses are still going out the door. You're, you're in a really rough pickle.
Remember the tax shift? I mean, I don't know.
That's exactly right.
I don't know who all, who all knows the history of the tax shift, but they just decided to basically skip a payment and have you recognize the next payment early. And that way, your revenues stay the same, but you have less cash. So I mean, who, who knows what they're going to do? You, you never really know.
Yeah.
And I do think.
How we got in the pickle, and, but I think that if we can get that number out there, where we start managing, assuming that number, we are just going to be a lot better off.
And when you talk about the tax shift and the withholding and stuff, I, I do believe that the, the new biennium that the legislature is going to get together to try and figure out is one that's going to be, started off with a large deficit. And that, of course, is what triggered that whole agreement as to how can we actually pass a balanced budget? It was really to use K-12 as a financing tool in order to allow that to happen. So there's nothing that might say that that may be the part of the solution moving forward, because it's going to be a significant state deficit when the legislature gets together.
Yep, I think so. I think it would be a good time to, to look at that.
I agree. All right. And moving on to the next slide, you know, just want to know what's happening with your cash in the general fund. Well, here, that's what we have on this slide. So you can see it's an upward trend. You know, your cash can bounce around from, from any point in time, but over the past five years, you can see what the trend is here. but over the past five years, you can see what the trend is here. Kind of matches the trend of your overall fund balance. All right, so that does it for the general fund. Uh, just gonna quickly touch on each one of your remaining funds here. Uh, this page, we have the debt service fund and your building construction fund, both combined here. Debt service, not a whole lot to talk about here. Your, your tax dollars come in, your funding comes in, you spend it on your debt payments, et cetera. Uh, building construction, of course, you had your proceeds here from the 2019 school building bonds. That's the six, 16.2 million dollars that you see there being the, uh, 15 million bonds plus the premium that came with it. And then about 3.4 million dollars worth of expenses on that project, through, through FY20, obviously more going into the next year here. So you ended the year with a large increase in that fund balance, about $13 million, 13.2 million at the end of the year. Next page, just looking at the cash in each one of these funds or both of these funds real quick. Debt service stays pretty consistent throughout the years. And then of course a jump with that building construction fund because of the cash you have on hand from those bond proceeds. Next page, we have your two remaining funds. This is your food service fund and your community service fund. Uh, food service activity is pretty similar to the prior year. Uh, both revenues and expenses were up a little bit, probably additional meals being served. I think a jump in your summer food program. Um, and then of course the related funding for that drives those, those revenues up as well. Uh, community service, uh, revenues were actually down a bit. Uh, decreases in, in fees and then local charges and that sort of thing, um, which is maybe to be expected given the circumstances. Uh, and that is why you've got that decrease there of about $37,000 in your fund balance. And the next page shows the cash in each one of these funds over the last five years. Bit of a drop in that community service fund, which results or which reflects that decrease in fund balance. And then at the end of the year in your food service fund, you actually had a, a large payment due from the state of about $125,000. So I would expect that cash balance jumped back up when you received that after year end. Okay, so that does it for all of your funds. Um, if you were to look through the, the large financial statements that we provide you, there's, there's kind of two sets of financials out there. There's the fund level data, which is what you're probably used to seeing most of the time. And then there's also the district-wide or the government-wide, uh, financial statements out there. So that's what we have on the next couple of pages here is looking at district-wide, everything wrapped together and then including those, those non-current items. So your capital assets and then your long-term debts, everything included here. So first page here, we have your district-wide assets, biggest changes. Current assets increased because of all the cash you have on hand from those bond proceeds. Also, we got an increase in your capital assets here because you've been investing those, that cash into your build, into your improvements. So increases in both categories here. The next page, we have the same item here for your district-wide liabilities. Uh, of course, the jump in the red there, that's the debt that you issued. So that's your outstanding debt at the end of the year. And then the increase in the current liabilities, your blue, that is because you have additional amounts due to contractors for the projects that are going on at the end of the year. The green bar there, just as a reminder, that is your net pension liability. That is your proportionate share of the statewide TRA and PDRA deficits. Probably not going to elaborate much more on that. I think, I think you've all heard that spiel. It's an on-paper liability only, you couldn't pay it off if you wanted to. And because of that, because I don't like that we have to include it in your financials, I have a graph here that I pull it out and I just compare your assets to your liabilities without the pension balances in there. So assets being the blue line, uh, liabilities being the red line, and then net assets or, or your net of the two is the green line. So looking at that net balance, you can kind of get a better feel of what's been happening. And even when those other balances fluctuate, you can see how that's been holding steady and actually slightly increasing over the past number of years. And finally, just one slide in here showing your, your debt balance trend over the past, uh, five years. Of course spiked up a bit there with the issuance of your debt this past year. That's everything I have.
Good. Any other questions for Ryan?
Nice presentation, very clean report.
Thank you.
It was very good, I thought.
Well, I think, uh, like I said, the audit went smoothly and I, I gotta just say thanks to, to Carrie and to Matt. They, they both did a great job.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
So we are looking for, um, a motion to approve the, uh, 1920 audit reported and prepared by Schletter, Leonard and Company. We have a motion from Maggie.
Second.
We have a second from Rick. Any further discussion? And we're back to you, Katie, for a roll call.
Ashley. Hi.
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 Thomas.
Hi.
Maggie.
Hi.
Bruce.
Hi.
Cheryl.
Hi.
Okay, Carrie. Okay, then. Thank you very much. We've been around the 1920 final budget after audit.
So this is the last, uh, task for the 1920 budget. Once the audit comes in, we will go in and finalize those, those audited numbers. Um, so essentially this is the final budget that will, um, become part of the archive. And then if you take the far right column, the ending fund balance, that column is what gets transferred over to the left column for the 2021 budget. And so, um, that's kind of just how these, these two budgets will work in unison. So we do need a, a motion and a, a second in order to approve the final 1920 budget after the audit.
So do we have a motion to approve the 1920 updated budget after audit?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion from Thomas.
A second.
A second from Cheryl. Any further discussion? Back to you, Katie.
Ashley. I'm sorry, what am I missing? Both the last?
We're working on a.
The last before?
We're just approving the final 1920 budget. Basically, the, the audit numbers that Ryan just shared, uh, we're plugging those into the 1920 budget and that'd be our final 1920 budget.
What's the difference between this vote and the last vote?
You were just approving the audit of the last one. Now you're taking the actual data from the audit and you're applying it to our budget.
God, I'm sorry. Thank you. Yeah, hi. Jacob.
Hi.
Rick.
Hi.
Thomas.
Hi.
Maggie.
Hi.
Bruce.
Hi.
Cheryl.
Hi.
Okay, Carrie. Okay, then we are in policy review. Okay, I'm gonna hand that off again, maybe to Matt.
Yep, so, uh, this is just picking up where we left off in October. Um, the policy committee met on October 5th. Uh, the board did first reading at the, um, October, uh, business meeting. And right now the recommendation would be to approve policies 601, 603, 612.1, 616 and 620. All of those are the exact same. There have been no changes since first reading in October. They've been posted and it'd be my recommendation to approve them as presented at first reading.
So I'll make a motion to approve. Do I need to say all of them? All the policies.
Thank you.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion from Maggie and a second from Rick. Any further discussion? Man, I'm gonna go back to you.
Yep.
When we were talking about, uh, adjusting our reserve.
Yep, that's coming up in the next agenda item. Yep.
Okay. And this is a first review, so there's no motion.
This is the second.
Or second review.
Yep. So these are identical to what you guys saw in October. Is, is all of these policies are the exact same thing. There have been no changes from what the board did with them in October.
Okay, so Katie, then we're back to you for.
Ashley. Hi.
Jacob. Hi.
Rick.
Hi.
Thomas.
Hi.
Maggie.
Hi.
Bruce.
Hi.
Cheryl.
Hi.
Okay, Carrie. Okay, and then we're gonna go down a little bit here to policy review, first reading action.
All right, can I take it from there?
Yes, go for it.
Okay, sorry about that. Let's, uh, look at 714 first. So 714 is the fund balance policy. This, uh, policy is, uh, the policy committee talked about this. Currently in our existing policy, the fund balance percentage is exactly what Ryan mentioned. It is set at 8%. Uh, that represents just shy of essentially one, one month of operating expenses. I think, given where the financial health of the district is at and where we are sitting with fund balance, I do think now is the time that the board could potentially, um, increase that. Uh, I did mention obviously the looming state budget issue that is real and that probably is going to have a significant impact on school districts in the next biennium and whatever that, um, solution looks like. So realistically, in my mind, it would be great for the district to get to a position where its fund balance policy represented two months of operating expenses. I don't think we need to go and do that all in one swoop. I think we can do this in a little bit of a phased approach. My recommendation in the, the conversation with the, the policy committee was, um, to, to look at that. So right now I would suggest what would the board think if we split the difference? And this time around, raise that from 8% to 12%. We are currently meeting the 12% uh, number, so it, we would still be in line, uh, with policy. Um, and of course, the other option is the board can keep the, the fund balance policy at 8%. There is nothing that requires the board to increase it. I do think that I would agree with Ryan's opinion. I do believe it's a little bit on the low side compared to maybe where, where it should be. So discussion amongst the board members, what do people think?
Does it have to be an even number? Could it be 12 and a half, right in the middle of what his suggestion is?
It certainly can.
Okay, I, I guess I'm there. Um, just from watching this over time, if we can move that to 12 and a half, get us right in the middle where the suggestion is at. We're not at the top end, we're not at the bottom end of that suggested area. Presently, we're way below, but it is a real shift when the state doesn't appear to have any money at the moment. And if the schools are a good avenue where there's lots of expenses going out, but we're the ones that scramble on the bad side. And it sometimes can't happen really rapidly. We can't be running out of cash. Top radar, somebody else can speak, but that's where I'm at. I'd like to see a 12 and a half.
I think that's a good number.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. West Central Ed, they had their audit at their last meeting and they are at three months of a fund balance, but their goal is at two months. And their auditor said too, the same thing, like, especially at times like these, like, it was recommended that two-month fund balance for sure.
I think when we first settled on that 8%, it was because we were struggling. And 8% was believable, but it was still moving upward from what we had. So 8% was a number that we were comfortable, that we could hit eventually. So I'm, I'm at the 12.5. I think that's a believable number and it gives us some leeway, some cushion.
Okay, so it, it appears that everyone around the table is, is comfortable with 12 and a half percent. Um, Ashley, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, uh, sorry, the, the, the audio quality is kind of cutting in and out for me. Am I hearing everybody say 12 and a half percent?
That is correct.
I, yeah, I'm cool with that too. Yep.
Okay, so, um, we will then modify when it comes to making a motion. Whoever's gonna make this motion will just have to approve the first reading of policy 714 with the 12 and a half percent inserted in place of 12%, okay? Can we move on to 721?
Yep.
Okay, so 721, um, this is a technical change. It actually has been, uh, driven by, uh, federal, uh, statute. The change to it is the procurement methods on page two. In the past, the statutory limits, instead of 10,000 in item E procurement method statement one, it was 3,000. They have upped that now to 10,000. And then in statement two, that limit used to be, uh, 150,000. Now it has been upped to 250,000. Those are the only changes to this policy. They are, it's really just taking our current policy and just aligning it with, uh, the state statute as it is cited in the policy. Irrelevant of, of whatever we do here tonight, if the board doesn't want to do it, the policy isn't gonna mean much because what's gonna be applied is gonna be the federal statute anyway. So it seems to me like it would just make sense to align it with federal, um, statute. But that is the, the extent of the changes. Just so, uh, the board is aware, when we're talking about, um, federal revenue sources, our largest, um, single source of federal revenue comes from either our title grant, that is a federal source, or, um, special education revenue. And actually, all of our federal dollars flow to the West Central Ed District. And then West Central Ed is the one who actually funnels those dollars to us and pays for qualified special ed expenses with them. So those are really the two sources of revenue or income that, that would potentially be, um, applied to, to this policy. It's really those two items. Any questions on 721?
Okay, so then we would be looking for a motion to approve the first reading of policy 714 by changing, um, the fund balance to 12.5% from 12.
Yep.
And approve, and, uh, 721 as presented.
Correct.
I'll make that motion.
Excellent.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Thomas. Any further discussion? Katie, we're a roll call.
Ashley. Hi.
Jacob. Hi.
Rick.
Hi.
Thomas.
Hi.
Maggie.
Hi.
Bruce.
Hi.
Cheryl.
Hi.
Carrie. Okay, so then we have next, Board of Education needs to appoint several members to the upcoming committees. Matt, alternate as.
So we have two things coming up here. First of all, Safe Roads to School. Um, the deadline for that planning grant application is actually tomorrow. Uh, the last communication I had with the city was last week. They were just finalizing it and gonna get it sent in. So, um, I have not talked to anyone from the city this week, but I'm assuming that that, uh, grant application is, is in the queue and just now waiting for somebody at the state level to approve it, to see if we get approved or not. Sounds to me like the likelihood of us getting approved are very high. So, um, we need, really need two board members that would be willing, once that planning process gets going. I think realistically, it's probably gonna start in January or February. We'll probably have, uh, a series of meetings. Realistically, you're probably looking at three to five commitments from either January, February through June is, is kind of what it would, would amount to. So we would, I'd like to have two board members that would be willing to serve on that on a temporary basis so that work can get done. And then the second one is, we want to keep moving forward with potential softball complex updates. And we're to a point where we need to get a couple of board members to be able to represent the board to kind of help with, uh, massaging design and, and what that might look like in order to, um, finalize a, a working budget and, and really be able to get down to analyze what it is that we can complete and what we can't complete. So those are the two things that I need. I am asking for two board members on each. There's no scientific reason why it's two. If it needs to be three, we could have three. I just, again, we don't, I don't want to quorum, so.
Let's, um, looks at first one. Who's interested in doing the first one?
I'd be willing.
I'd be willing to.
Okay.
On the first one. Okay, so that's two.
So we have Bruce and Rick for the first one. You got that? Thank you.
Then on the softball complex, I'm gonna stand off of that one for sure. I need people that are involved.
I'd like to be in the softball one, but. I'd like to be on the softball one also.
Okay.
Can it be three?
Yeah, I don't care. Like I said, there's, there's no scientific ever reason for, for two. So if we want three, that's fine.
Okay, you guys are it.
Okay. I don't know if we need a, if we need a motion and a second for this. I just thought to make it official, we would do it.
Let's just do it.
But that's why the motion.
Let's just do it. So we need a motion introduced to motion to appoint the following board members, that we just talked about. So Rick and I to the safe route, Thomas and Cheryl and Maggie to the softball complex. Do we have a motion?
I'll second.
Motion from. Motion from Thomas, second from Cheryl. Any further discussion? Katie, could you do a roll call?
Yep, Ashley. Hi.
Jacob. Hi.
Rick.
Hi.
Thomas.
Hi.
Maggie.
Hi.
Bruce.
Hi.
Cheryl.
Hi.
Carrie. Okay, then the last thing is review of upcoming meetings.
December 7th, Policy Committee is, is meeting. It's the 800 policies that we're going to be reviewing. If you would please go to the website and start checking out 806, which is the crisis policy. It is probably about 45 pages long. That is going to be the, the, the consumption of our Policy Committee. That is a huge one, so just a heads up on that one. The, and then December 15th, I just want to make sure I have this correct. We're doing two board meetings on that day. So we will have the 1:30 business meeting. That most of this, it'll be a very traditional December agenda. You guys will pay bills, do your regular action work, and there'll be students coming from Student Council, from Middle School, School and Council, and Senior High Student Council for the December 15th meeting at 1:30. And then we're going to meet again on December 15th at 6:00 PM in order to do the truth and taxation hearing that is required for us. I think we have to have that done by December 20-something. There's a deadline that we have to hit, but we're well within that. But I just want to make sure everyone knows, we're having two board meetings on December 15th, the 1:30 business meeting. What's that?
You've been on our calendar.
I need to get the, I need to get one of them on the calendar. I will add it.
Yep.
Okay.
Are we able to have the 1:30 meeting in this room?
That's exactly my question also.
Yeah, so we're going to modify how we're going to do that. It's not going to be the entire student councils that are going to be coming to that. It's going to be a, a smaller representation of each of the student councils.
Only half the students are here today, anyway.
Well, we have that factor, and then, you know, we can have, clearly, we could have three or four Student Council members here. But to your point, Rick, absolutely. If we're going to try and fill this room with Middle School, Student Council and Senior High.
I was thinking in the past, they used to have like 20 would come.
Yeah, it's just not going to work out. So it'll be a modified version, but I think you're still going to hear some of the, the stuff that, that the board's looking for.
Okay.
Last year after this meeting, did we do the review?
The review.
Like your annual.
That'll be December.
Oh, it is only November.
Yep.
This is December, this is, or these meetings are in December.
These, yeah, so the December 15th business meeting, that will also be where my evaluation is.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, is that that will be tied in? Okay. I was like, wait, it says December here, not, I'm, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, anything else? Jacob, we are waiting for you.
I moved the board, you now adjourn.
And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Cheryl, any further discussion? I suppose we should do a roll call. We should. Ashley, can we adjourn?
Ashley. Thank you for letting me come virtually. Hi.
Hi.
Rick.
Hi.
Thomas.
Hi.
Maggie.
Hi.
Bruce.
Hi.